I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a few seconds for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Roll call.
Percy?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
Reichter?
Here.
Henry?
Any audience comment on any of the agenda items before you? Okay, CDBG update. Jamie, you have the floor, the podium, or whatever you want.
Over here. Last week, on Thursday, we had a meeting to discuss the Chestnut Street project, and I just wanted to give everybody a quick update for those who weren't able to be there. The drawings are pretty much 90 percent finished. Lee is working with Mike Hurst that are on the storm sewer and sewer work. He's got to meet with Scott to go over the waterline stuff. The plans for the MPDES and ENS permits have been submitted, and the PennDOT HOP was submitted for the front street crossing. So the permits should be in place by mid-September, and we just need an easement yet for the parking lot of the 10th street. So what we're looking at, we're going to significantly increase the pipe sizes up to all 12-inch sewer lines, and the front street crossing is going to be a directional drill rather than actually tearing up front streets, so PennDOT should be happy with that. We're looking at maybe converting some sewage discharge from rear properties to the front properties into the new system, if a possibility. And we're still discussing the lateral, the long chestnut, about how far we're going to go. I think we're looking at going to the backside of the sidewalks so they don't have to be torn up again, but that's still under discussion. We talked about the funding of the project, and what we have in place, and what we still need. The project is $3,686,132, according to the estimate from the engineer. That includes your engineering, your construction, any of the grant administration, labor standards enforcement, and your audit and environmental review. I've sent a letter to PennDOT letting them know that we did reduce our request to $750,000 from the million, since the MPO was a little shy about that million-dollar maximum that we asked for, because we could ask for $750,000 from the CDBG competitive rather than $500, like we thought, so we adjusted those numbers. The competitive application is submitted. I gave two copies of it to Terry today, so the city has two copies for your records and for your review. The cover letter that I sent along with that to Donna and Rico, who is our grant manager, was also copied to Secretary Walker with the CED, the PennDOT contact who does the transportation alternative program, and I'm trying to think who else. But it pretty much went to everybody. We asked money from, to explain to them that if they would all come together and fund this, then we would have a full project at the $3.6 million level. Phil Dunn did send a letter for me from Senator Gordon's office that was signed by Senator Gordon and Representative Culber. The funding awards are scheduled for September 9th at the Commonwealth Financing Authority, so that's the multi-modal transportation fund and the PA small water and sewer grant that municipal authority applied for. They are supposed to be announced September 9th. The PennDOT transportation awards are supposed to be announced sometime in September. There was no date given. So once we get those awards announced, and we know whether we were successful or not, then I will contact Donna and the CED and ask them to review the applications based on the other funding that is in place. They should be willing to do that, provided we have the rest of the money in place. If we don't get all the money, if all the grants aren't awarded, we're going to look at doing Phase 1, which is front street to Third Street. We can do the complete project from there to there with the money that we have secured, so that will be a step in the right direction, and then keep moving forward when we get some additional money. Up front, there is a list I placed that gives you the addresses, if anybody in the audience would like to send letters of support for the grant applications. It never hurts to have them coming in after the grant application before award dates, because then it brings that grant application back in front of the person who received it. So if you didn't send a letter in for us, and we did get quite a few letters for the competitive, so thank you very much. If you didn't submit one, please feel free to send one in, or pass this on to somebody else that you know in the city that might be willing to send one. Doesn't have to be fancy, it doesn't have to be typed, it doesn't matter, as long as it's something that shows your support, the more support, the more likely it will be funded. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. The redevelopment authority was just, talk about the Chestnut Street project. A piece of ground out there where the four properties have burned down or were tore down, and I admit any meeting we have with the panel, I know of some of them. Could that be tied into that project somehow, if we decide that we want to try to do something with it? When you look at that project, we don't want to have a city block there of just busted-up stones that are sitting there first, so something's going to win there sooner or later, and they were looking at those properties just per se as they were. So I guess my thing is, is that something that could be added as part of that project, or would be completely separate?
I think that would have to be completely separate, depending on what it was. So if you were just going to do a parking lot for access to the Albright Center, or the riverfront, or whatever, that would be fine. I think we could roll that right in. But if you were going to do some other kind of thing, we'd have to talk about what that thing, what the purpose of that specific use would be, to determine whether...
I guess, and I, and thank you for that, and I answered my question, but it would be horrible to do that all brand-new, put all that stuff in there, and still have that vacant...
Right, and I, and I, right, and I think, you know, obviously, we will do the sidewalks out front of it, and we'll just do, you know, we'll just have a leveled lot, or whatever. We'll make it look, we won't be...
We've got four different owners to deal with, too, that's the other issue, too. But again, the authority, but have, is looking at options that they can do to keep them moving. Because we could coordinate all and get that all done at the same time, that would be, that would be a very nice project.
It sure would, you're right.
Jim?
Yes.
I have a question, please. When you say, is that for the residents to write a letter showing their support for the Chestnut Street project?
Yes.
Okay, and who do they contact, or where do you find, where do you send this information?
It's right up front here, did you get one?
I thought I did, but maybe I didn't.
I printed out, printed out, so with the names and addresses for each of the grants that we submitted.
Yes, I did get this.
Yes.
Okay, so you send a letter, a resident would send a letter to each one of these people?
Yes.
And what would the letter, what would it say?
Help whatever you wanted it to say, just basically that you support the project, the city has applied for a funding for this project, and any reason in particular why you think that the project should be done. It can be as simple as two sentences, it can be whatever you like to do.
It could be even like light removal, or just make the city look nicer, or safer, or the sidewalks.
It can be whatever reason you feel that the project is important.
Well, I certainly like and would like to do that. I have one more question, so that I'm not confused.
Sure.
I believe that one of the meetings you had passed the council to vote on taking the funds from the PA Safe Routes to School and combine it with the...
What that is, we don't actually vote on that. What PennDOT did at the state, they combined that PA Safe Routes to School with a couple of their other programs that they had, I don't know what they all are, and they combined it into this one grant opportunity, this Transportation Alternatives Program grant. So what used to be your Safe Routes to School, and then there were some other ones, they've combined into this one grant program. And the city this year applied for the Chestnut Street sidewalk and lighting improvements for that grant. So it's the same, that, what used to be the Safe Routes to School is just now part of that TAP, that Transportation Alternatives grant.
All right, so when that grant was awarded, it's not like getting a federal grant, you have to use it specifically for what it was awarded?
It is, that grant has not been awarded, we just, we applied for it. We put in an application, or an application for the grant. So ours is in there with the rest of the state's applications for projects, for consideration of that money. So they're not supposed to make their award announcements until September, so we won't know if we get funding for that grant until, that's one of the ones on the list, to send a letter of support asking them to fund it.
And again, now I want to go back to the safe school. So with that, I think when I asked the last time, I couldn't get anyone, I guess, to commit themselves to fixing the sidewalks in proximity of the school.
Yeah, that would be a decision that the council would make next time the grant opens, and I'm not sure if it's every year or every other, I really didn't get a clear picture of how often they have these grant funding rounds. So when that opens the next time, then the council would consider whether they want to apply for that or not, because the city would be the applicant for those funds.
All right, so it would be up to the council to do that?
Right, right, and they probably won't discuss that until they see if they even open a grant round, and then they'll discuss what they want to do. Thank you. Roll call. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. New business, board appointments, Rick?
Yeah, I think it was two months ago, at the hardboard meeting, we got a letter that Frankie Jones was going to resign from the hardboard and be searching for a replacement room, was a real order, and Amy Weiner responded that she would be willing to take that position on the hardboard, so I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Amy Weiner to the board.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
These code vehicles, right?
Yeah, we are without a, going to be without one of our vehicles at the end of the month because it won't pass inspection. Looking at different avenues, there's some money already in the budget for a vehicle for, I guess, for a couple of years. And down, I looked at new vehicles, I got prices on a two-wheel-drive pickup because of our involvement with, that's getting more and more with the redevelopment authority and responsibilities that go with that, with removing property from homes and stuff like that. I got three quotes, one from Alexander, one from Zimmerman, and one from Summerie Motor Company for the vehicles, and one, the Alexander vehicle was a retail of $28,330, and cost our price was $23,600. Zimmerman's was $26,790, and their cost our bid was $22,501. Summerie Motor Company's retail was $27,695, and the cost our price was $19,700. Make the motion, well, I'd like to make it that I can go ahead and get the lease of these people for a four-year, the money has already been budgeted into the budget for a four-year lease.
You have lots of money there? It's authorized this year. We don't have lots of money, but it is a, but it's a project.
Keep in mind that...
She has to wait for his car, so I was just saying.
Keep in mind that we will be budgeting the same $5,000 for the next three years to finish paying for that lease, so it will be three more years of commitment beyond this year.
I think those $18,000 originally budgeted the year before this year to buy the vehicle.
But you have the $5,000 for the first year?
Yes, sir.
Ister?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Award bid Phase 2 Market Street project. Jamie and I have been talking over the last couple of weeks, and the, correct me if I'm wrong here, this was, there was a bidding procedure put out by the Hill Street neighborhood on the 1200 block of Market Street. We've been talking about that for meetings on and on. So we accumulated all the facts and figures that we got here, and there was four bids put in. The U Court forum was the high bid of $58,900, Larson Design Group was second at $47,800, and then the last two, $36,500, $36,000, even with some indirect expenses, so I believe the last two, the Mid-Penn and the CES engineering, would be the low bids. But we, the problem with this is, this money runs out in 2015, so we've been talking about this, wow, for what, two or three years at Hill Street, a group has put this together. Megan, if you want to throw something in, just holler anytime you want, but we need to get this money spent, we need to get this engineer put in, get this thing moving. Do you agree on that? Any comments?
Absolutely, I actually do have something on that. The Hill neighborhood made a recommendation to the SRI board to accept the vote from Mid-Penn, and the SRI board approved that, so I was actually getting ready to present that to you whenever, you know, ASAT, so that you're aware of that, that's their recommendation.
Okay, Megan, only I have to say is, of course, the CES is the engineering firm which is on Chestnut Street here in the city, and they're also doing work with municipal authority at even the county, I'm correct?
Yep, we just signed it last week.
Okay, that's number one. There was $500 difference between the two quotes, being the fact CES is in town and we're working with them almost on every other weekly basis, he's in town working with us, and if you take him with the Mid-Penn's contract, on the backside, there's some other things built in for expensive copies, printing, postage, and so forth and so forth, and the quote was between $800 and $1,600, which theoretically would take, and also make it a little higher than the CES. So nothing against what the Hill section decided, Megan, but I'm looking for the fact of working with their firm, we know what we have, because we've worked with them for a couple of years now, off and on. I'm going to make a recommendation, you can take and use CES for the project on Market Street.
I got one thing I like, it said the minimum's going to be $18,000 or as much as $1,600. Well, if that means, if that means $800 is minimum, $800, I'm sorry, that would put them over CES's bid anyway, so I'd make theirs $36,800.
Well, that's CES, but here again, I'm looking more, we know what we have with the CES, we deal with them for a couple of years, if we don't move municipal authority, that's fine.
And he's also doing our part with the Harley grant for, to get the new lights, too.
Well, that's right, he is in the heart of that project. Good job, Harley.
Jamie, we can begin, but we want it right?
Yeah, the state grant money, which is the piece of grant funds, doesn't have a requirement for procurement of professional services, because it just follows your local code, but even under the procurement requirements for professional services, you don't have to choose by price, you choose by qualifications and by relevant experience and those kind of things, but you are correct with Mid-Penn's indirect expenses, if we put it over CES's building.
All right. Oh, your motion accepts something.
I'll read that, the formal motion, I'll say.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Now, the fact that we're back, Jamie, I got to ask you, we're back to 2015, we're not too far from now, so we need to move on, so anything we else we need to do, please? Thank you for bearing that to my attention, that probably went too long, we shouldn't have waited this long. Anything else without Megan you wanted to say? Did you have anything on SRI in general you wanted to say?
I do, just to remind everyone that the Lake and Gush Renaissance Fest will be this Saturday. There are flyers up along the council's table in regard to the main event, which is from 12 to 6, and also the feast, which is in the evening, which is part of the fundraiser of the event, and that is at 6:30 at the Elks. During the day, there'll be all sorts of entertainment, at the amphitheater, there will be roving jugglers, musicians, people selling flowers, it should be, it should be a really great event on the rehearsal, I hope if anybody can attend, they do.
Are you guaranteeing the same weather we had at the Riverfest, then?
Would you say something about the Elks, or something at the Elks afterwards?
Yes, there is a concession from the riverfront to the Elks Lodge at, between 6:00 to 6:30, and at 6:30, there will be a dinner with the Duchess, and it will be a medieval feast. That is, the main event, 12 to 6, is an admission price, but for the feast, it will be a ticket, there will be 100 tickets available for people who want to participate in the feast. And you may come in costume, but you do not need to, but it should be...
There's no silverware.
There will be a spoon and a knife, there will be no force.
We'll make sure Jim gets, I mean, he doesn't have his application.
But it should be a lot of fun, so please...
Megan, what is that one?
One, one...
September 20th?
Yeah.
What is it? September 20th. Jamie, you have a costume for Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, now, we've got a joke for you.
I had to say something.
But any additional information, there's, we have a Facebook page, which is very active, that shows all sorts of images of the different events that are going on, as well as, you know, and the flyers up there.
Thank you. John, approval of pay invoices?
Okay, we have general, general fund invoices to pay in the amount of $63,560.06, and liquid fuels of $459.31, and make a motion that we approve those for payment.
Second, second.
Shipman?
Yes.
Reichter?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Present 2015 non-uniform pension, Mr. Shipman.
Okay, thank you. We have the computation for next year, 2015, for the non-uniform, that would be all city employees except the, our police department. The obligation for next year would be $130,034. Again, that is in line with current, bringing our total pension obligations for next year to $586,000.
Audience comment, anything specific anybody wants to talk about today?
Yes.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Regine Russell, community activist. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I would like to begin by commending all parties involved in planning and the preparation of a successful 2014 summer festival. Also, I'd like to let the council know that the homeowners in my neighborhood and other communities are grateful for the attention that you've been giving to the glided properties and seeing the small baby steps of improvement throughout the city. I have a couple of questions for Councilman Shipman, if it's okay. What accounting description in your chart of accounts would you charge legal fees to?
We have a line item for legal fees that should be charged to those line items. Each department would have its own item, because sometimes legal fees are related to police work, or sometimes they're related to code and so forth, but each, each department should have a line item for legal fees.
Each department. Are you able to tell us how much the city spent on legal fees defending the mayor and the council for abusive actions?
I can't tell you that at this moment, we could, we could get that information.
Because that would affect the city insurance that you pay, or do they have, I don't know, is it an ongoing insurance, or aggregate insurance?
It may, it may affect the insurance, some of that would be paid directly out of city funds, if there's actually legal action brought against the city, we also do have insurance that would respond, so it could be a combination of the two.
And are you able to say now if we're under budget or over budget on that line item?
I can't say that right at this moment, but I will research.
All right, do I need to do a right-to-know, sir, for you? I'm always told that, so I'm asking you, do I have to do that to get those answers?
Jerry, would that require a right to...
Well, if she wants, if she wants a report that we have, like an accounting report, then...
If you're just looking for the numbers, I can, I can...
She wants something personal from you, then that's not...
At this point, I don't think we need that.
Thank you. Councilman Reichter, I've been making requests, and I know you got into the office this year, and you've been doing a fantastic job. I wanted to still address the sidewalks and the area, I know I saw you out there one time with Joe Swob in the beginning of your term. What future plans do you have for my neighborhood that's in proximity of the school for the repair of sidewalks?
We don't have any plans for the repair of sidewalks, other than the 408 or 420 Wallen Street, we addressed that with a gentleman. He had corrected the problem by cementing a taper into them, but those sidewalks are not going to be corrected at all until the tree removals are done, because those trees are what's forcing the sidewalks.
And when you say that, is that cost incurred by the homeowner?
By the homeowner.
Okay, now, this, this is where I get a little confused, because I believe that when the grant that was applied for by the city, that it made or had provisions for sidewalks in proximity of the school to be repaired, that would have been a part of that.
My understanding is, the only, the only grant that was applied for was the grant for Chestnut Street, there was no grant for anywhere else in the city, and that's where the money has to be spent.
That's correct, it was Chestnut Street this year, and then we had talked about future funding years, the city could decide if they wanted to apply for another area.
So when they give the grant from Safe, from the PA Safe Routes to School, I'm like under the impression that's for the school area?
There is no longer a PA Safe Routes to School grant specific, it was all, all of what was that and some other programs were rolled into this Transportation Alternatives program, which is a much broader program. So they eliminated the Safe Routes to School specific program.
But there is another program.
It's this TAP program, this Transportation Alternatives, it's a larger program, so while it could be, you could use them for sidewalks and lighting anywhere necessary in your municipality, it doesn't have to be right in the school. But you're right, there was a program.
I'm going to address this to now, so how long did we have that grant?
We don't have it yet, it wasn't awarded yet.
We don't have it yet, okay.
That's one that we, they're supposed to announce awards in September, it's been applied for, but not, we don't know awards yet.
Thank you very well.
I try.
The foot traffic from the students is starting to increase, and I think we all know, I believe it's begun now. I would like to know, Councilman Reichter, why do you still refuse to enforce the parking ordinance at 354 Wallen?
It's not my ordinance to enforce, I think, I think the ex-chief, Mazzio, addressed that before, where he said there was nothing wrong with the way they were parked, and I believe the woman came up at a meeting, and also had information from the state, and she was perfectly legal with what she was doing. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a non-issue, I add nothing more, there's no code violations there. There's not a safety violation, there's no code violation.
It's a clear and present act of defiance, sir, and it demonstrates complete disregard for any rule or law that's on the books. And I've asked about this, it's like, what type of a message are you sending to the children that live in that house, or the children who are students that walk that path? You are the director of public safety, and I don't understand why the children who are residents, they're entitled to freely walk without a safety hazard on a public sidewalk, and you, in your own, in your own mouth and words, you said, when you and Chief Mazzio went and spoke to the woman, you said, she doesn't mind that they bang on the back of the trunk of her car as they pass. Well, they're doing that because the car is blocking here from the public sidewalk, and that little thing from the Department of Transportation...
I'm going to up what we're doing.
That's talking a five-foot rule, and that five-foot rule does not include the curb cut, and I know that everybody in here understands what I've said, I know that curious minds have driven by that property and had to see what I keep coming here and discussing, and I shouldn't have to do this. Like I said, you are public safety, the children's welfare should be your concern of how they walk back and forth. If she wants to park like that at nighttime, fine, if she wants to park like that on the weekend, fine, but I've lived there in that neighborhood for eight years. What made the difference that now, all of a sudden, she can park illegally? And I'm not the only one saying this, there's other people.
This is the last time I'm going to tell you this, we've addressed this at how many meetings, I don't know. There is nothing illegal about what she's doing, it is not a code issue.
It's a parking violation.
It's not a code issue. If you think it is a, if it's a parking violation, that's a police issue, that is not a code issue.
And when I called the police department, like you said, called dispatch, dishback, dispatch says code has to address that, so I think that some, the right hand needs to know what the left hand is doing, and you probably need to write them a letter, letting them know that when this call comes through, that they have the permission to go ahead and do this.
I don't, I don't, I don't give the police department permission to do anything.
Are you related to her?
No, I'm not.
Are you dating her?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Be sure.
Okay, and in final, I'd like to say that I don't believe this would be happening in your neighborhood or any other council members' neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your opinion. Anybody else? Tree stump removal, I might do that, I don't see the date on here, John, we're still...
We have a date by next month.
Okay, so we're still looking for, your list isn't big enough yet, right, though?
That's right.
We're still looking for some tree stumps, you've got to be some out there, people, there has to be some in front of your house, you can trip over when you get in your car.
Hey, I'd like that, if anybody sees any, call us, we're making a list in City Hall, call City Hall, or call the tow truck, or call a tow, and we will go out, and we're eventually going to try and hold them for when they come, then we'll know... going to try and warn them, but when they come, then we'll know. But we're looking, we have people out looking every day. Call us if you find one. And if it's on the list, thanks, it's not, we appreciate it all.
I do want to announce, I guess Terry can be a copy, it just seems like every day we're closing more highways down. But on Monday, September fifteenth, I know that's a little ways away, but not that far, but they will be closing, or one forty-seven south of the city for completion of physical work on before November twenty-sixth, so that's going to be two months. So, I'm not sure how, you know, it's going to get to the point you're going to have to think about getting into the city, or getting out of the city. Well, you should get up and down to that spot, you'll have to move somewhere else around. But I want to bring that to everybody's attention. There's music in the park, tomorrow's the last one. Six o'clock, Billy B. Rosie. After this meeting, we're going to have a Board of Health hearing, so we're a couple minutes away from that. Also, tomorrow, six o'clock, one fifty-two Bainbridge, we're having an auction on that property. That's a solo home, a single home. A nice home, really. That was sold before. The plan was, when you buy a home to the Redevelopment Authority, there are bidding processes, you have to submit a plan, what you're going to do with it. The plan that the people wanted to use that property for was not approved by the Redevelopment Authority, so that will be resold tomorrow night, six o'clock. The other thing I wanted to mention that I take very seriously, and we had a meeting here, I don't remember what day it was, Chief could remind me, but I just want to mention that we are on top of what's happening with the Friendship Post company. It's very important that people, Summery, and I believe they know this, but we need to make sure that everybody understands that the city of Summery could never, ever survive without a volunteer fire department, at, at any level. It just couldn't happen. You, sometime you get a chance to look at what waysport spends on fire departments, so, so it's impossible. Also, the city of Summery is not interested in getting involved in the personnel issues or personnel issues or anything else within the fire companies themselves. But it is our responsibility to protect the lives and property of the citizens of Summery, and being, and saying that, we are definitely concerned about, not necessarily rumors, but let's take the facts that came about from the Friendship meeting. And the facts that a board of trustees or a board of directors are exactly, I guess they're trustees, might I call it that right?
Or directors, none of them.
Those people do have a financial responsibility. So, when they're voting on things that are happening or not voting, whatever it is, that is their responsibility to take care of. There was a failure with that fire department, and I'm not blaming it on anybody, but there's no reason anybody, or any of our fire departments should have went eight months without fire insurance. It just shouldn't have happened. So, I'm not sitting here to criticize the Friendships or to criticize anybody else, but you will, you are going to hear us talk about the city council, and I believe most of the gentlemen sitting up here agree with me. We need to make sure that there's, what I'm calling a base, we just need to have a, some sort of situation. I know the fire department has a consolidation committee together, I don't know how active they are. But again, I, the two things I want to emphasize is, we, we're not doing this to get in anybody's business at a local fire department. We know what their responsibilities are, they know what they are. But we, in good conscience, could never sit up here and let our volunteer fire departments crumble around this if there's something that we can do. And that's all we're saying, is we want to be able to do something, we want to be able to help heal the situation. And if that means a couple of emergent, if that means whatever may come out of it, we're not up here to make that decision. But it's very, very important that everybody understands, if you're involved in a voluntary fire department, you're not involved, that is crucial to the future of the city of Summery. We take it for granted now, but clearly, after some of the things that are brought up, and, and, you know, me, I don't deal in rumors, but there's lots of them flying around, the fiscal responsibility of all our fire departments. We need those fire...